I'm really excited to see that we have Paul Cass here. Paul is a current city council person and he's a candidate for mayor in Ely. And we're going to learn about current and future city projects. And other goings on with the city and then we'll have lots of time for Q and A with Paul. So thank you so much for being here, Paul.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, hi, I'm Paul Cass. And I'm here today to do just really a little basic thing. Try to give you some information on the activities that the city of Ely has been involved in in recent years. Mostly this year. And to help you gain some appreciation for the wide range of things the city of Ely does. To improve the quality of life that we all enjoy. So that's, that's the goal here. We'll come away with more. Maybe more questions and I'll just literally kind of run through some of these things. If you have questions about any individual project or idea, ask question. Don't mind being interrupted at the time. Or you can wait till the end, either way it's fine. But I'll move fairly quickly through this list. But first about me, I was born and raised in Ely, Minnesota. All four of my grandparents immigrated from Finland. And so we have deep ties in the community and I've been involved in. Community and civic affairs my whole life. Lived in Ely pretty much my whole life. Been on the city council for on and off twenty seven years. And. My wife was a high school home ec teacher, counselor, retired as principal. So we have long roots in the school system. Our three kids went here, all of those good things. And I counted up the million community college for over the course of forty years. So I retired a couple of years ago and I've been trying to enjoy it. And fortunately, I have grandchildren who live here in town, so I empty my wallets to them. And then take care of. Well, you take care of the area. So it's a little bit about me. I gotta wear these two. Most cities are known for the kind of infrastructure that they have, the big building projects and stuff like that. Ely's no exception to that. And so here's some of the infrastructure we're currently involved in. Just over the hill here is an eight point five million dollar wastewater improvement project. This is no small thing. It's to reduce the mercury. And you know, to create and keep the environment clean, so that's a, but that's a big, big project. It is ninety six percent grant funded. And so some of the, including the IRRV, they get involved with a lot of the things that we do. And quite frankly, that's one of the things you should appreciate. Is that the taxes from the mining companies, the steel mining companies. Provide a lot of support for area community. And we should be in recognition of that and appreciate that. I think that wastewater plant got two hundred and fifty thousand grant. They don't fund the whole thing. Another one is the Spalding Housing Project. One of the biggest projects, challenges we face is more housing, like a lot of rural communities do. It's, it's priceless mode almost in Ely. There's nothing to rent. It's just people are turning away jobs because they can't find a place to live. So one of, one of the things we've done is to create. Done in Spalding, a series of eleven residential lots and we've sold four of those. That's a four hundred thousand dollar price tag. Hundred and fifty came from the actual. So with their help, we're able to put those projects together. And then sell those lots, which will create more housing, not necessarily more housing for the people who live here. But they might move out of a house into and build something on these lots. I know that's the case in one of them. And then that house, their house becomes available for other housing. So that's by creating more, it kind of doubles down. But like most things, it's all about streets and roads, isn't it? So we are constantly doing roads and streets. Our current area of emphasis is down in Eighth and Ninth Avenues. Harvey and Conan and White's down in there. We have a big repaving project going there now, so those things aren't cheap either, of course. Those are, that's a Ninth and Patterson is an eight hundred thousand dollar project paid for by city funds. And. There are others too, and we anticipate we'll continue with that kind of thing. Some of us on the council have some concern that. We've put all of our discretionary money into roads and streets. That lessens the amount we have for addressing other issues. And in my mind, that includes housing. We may have to shift away from roads and streets as infrastructure and try to help out a housing project. So there's a lot going on there and this council has to set that decision. And the big infrastructure projects we have are the improvements at the Ely Airport, which is kind of our hidden gem. It's a full, I think, five thousand foot runway. And we're building parallel taxiways. And so over the last year or two. We built a parallel, it's part of a parallel taxiway for a million five, a connector taxiway. For a million body equipment for like snow removal equipment and things like that for half a million. All of this was funded by the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA. Now, we were fortunate, most of the time. That involves a ninety percent funding by FAA. And then the ten percent is left to state and locals. But if you have a million and a half dollar project, ten percent is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which is a pretty big chunk for a local community to swallow. Fortunately, the state has been almost always willing to commit five percent. That still puts us on the burden for seventy five, which is not a huge chunk. But still, that kind of thing adds up over time and we'd rather be doing other things with that money. But because of COVID, FAA came in and funded a hundred percent of projects these last couple of weeks. And the reason we're able to do those things is that. Our city clerk and the department heads are very good at keeping our capital improvement plans up to date. So that when, when the money comes, we have a project that's shovel ready. And that's why we're able to get airport funding for some of these good things. And some of the other things that are going on too, the trailhead. But that's sort of the community infrastructure. Now, some of these roll over and cross. Cross paths here. From the project perspective, I'm just gonna go through a couple of them. The Hidden Valley Mountain Bike Trails, for example, which are new and popular. They cost a half a million dollars. And so that was pretty much not all of grants funded, but two hundred dot thousand came from the IRRR. A hundred and fifty came from the General. Recreational Trails Program. So we got it mostly funded with, you know, other people's money, which is how you get things done. Taxpayers, by the way, are not. Our income level is such that we qualify for community development block grants and money to the communities. And not that those are particularly low income, but they're not, we're not a wealthy community. So there are some areas that don't qualify and we can't, we can't use the CDVG money for those purposes. Another big one we're involved in, we don't have much money in the system, is the Prospector UTV Loop. The Trail. And that's three point seven, that's almost always, almost all funded by the actual player. Ely acts as a fiscal agent. And because, you know, we have the depth of experience to do that, we helped out that project by doing those things. Our biggest project we continue to work on now. And you see it every day probably as you drive out of Ely. Is the West End Development Project. That's the trailhead that's not yet built, but we do have funding in place. We have two thousand and nineteen estate bonding money for a million three. And twenty twenty bonding money for a million five. And additionally, are expecting to get, I don't think we see it yet, but we've been approved. For another million and a half from the federal economic development agencies. When money comes from other places, we try to put it together into those things. That's an exciting project because there are, you know, three or four trails that end there. And it'll be a building, even at a grand, but on a heavenly venue. But a place where we can sort of have a visual representation of our community. Kind of recreation. And the new trail just coming to town, one that's being paved today, or one of these days. They're getting closer. That one, that trailhead as well. There'll be a big new building that'll be going up as quick as we can get there. But that's part of a West End redevelopment project that we intend to. Where the old city garage is on West White Street there. West Conan, all the way up to the hostel. We want to redevelop that area, housing as well. We have some land planted back there. And we have, we've investigated building more of the condos that are popular down on Lockington. Those are, excuse me. Little popular, we have a thirty person waiting list for those units. So we'd like to build more of those, but here's the issue. Project, I think it's twenty fourteen.
Know that? Yes.
That was our representative Housing and Rehab Authority. And.
We have a waiting list.
Yeah, so Ely has a multitude of public housing. But we, we need more housing and it's market rate kind of housing. The. The price tag came in estimated at eight million dollars. And you can finance that with reasonable rents, probably up to maybe fifteen hundred with a projected rents. Beyond that, that they get to be a little too pricey for people in Ely to, to, to afford.
We have a bonding capacity for eight million.
So we might have to bond for it and those kinds of things, but on all of these housing projects. It involves some sort of government money involved. You can finance it out of the rents for about six million dollars. But you gotta come up with the other two million dollars. But all you do that is people get really creative. And we'll be working on that as well, but it takes time. Do we need that housing now? Now, that's a, that's a challenge. There's some other smaller things too, like we extended the Seamers Park Trail down to the beach and the pavilion. That was a hundred and twenty thousand of IRRR, not much city money in that. Some city work involved in that. And the downtown pocket park, you know, small project, but we continue to do those things. Can't find the page two now, I got another whole page of stuff. But Ely is really quite active in supporting our local businesses. And so with COVID money that came. We were able to support local businesses. The city itself gave out grants to, I mean, eleven or twelve, maybe more. Businesses that came in and said they would retire and retain and were employees. And if they did that, the grant would, the loan would be forgiven and they could just keep that way. So that was a good thing for local businesses. We do that in other ways too, as we work through our EEDA, which is the Ely Economic Development Authority. We meet separately as a body on the fourth Tuesday. Excuse me. And we focus on just sort of business development opportunities. Now, we have a staff, John Fido, who's under contract to the city. And he attends most of the regional meetings that pertain to this stuff. And he's our interface with local businesses. So as a local business wants to expand and wants to know what kinds of programs or help are available. He's the go-to guy. And he's done really well, a lot of businesses that take advantage of the programs that are available. And they start with just the business advice, how you start a business. I'm glad to say back in the early nineteen eighties, I worked for the EEDA. Different name at the time. And I was the one who started the Small Business Development Program in Ely. Has managed to survive all these years. That's much bigger now, there's a lot more money behind it. But if you're looking to start a business, the lots and new, not some job growth comes from people starting their own businesses. Entrepreneurs and who want to develop that culture. Then we have the kind of support from there, all the way up to helping establish mature businesses like the Vincent Brothers. As they can put together their six million dollar. Program in store. So it goes a long way. A couple of the other examples are when Rural Living, which unfortunately can't find enough staff to operate as intended. The IRRV was there with a couple hundred thousand dollars to extend water and sewer. So that we could get that project going. The developer did his own thing in building that and trying to make it run. But the city's always there trying to do the things that we can to support there. The boathouse got seventy four thousand for a sprinkler system, that kind of thing like that, so we're involved in that. Oh, and we had the COVID money too. We gave out those grants, but I'll tell you. I think one of the things that was impacted in the community for the nonprofits. So we were, I was able to convince the council easily because it's an easy sell. That we should distribute a third of the money that we got from the government. For COVID relief things. Now, the city took some to absorb, to cover its losses during COVID. But we spread it out in the community to the food shelter, ECR, to hospitals and, you know, we spread that money out. And we spread out, spread out a hundred and thirty thousand dollars into the nonprofits and community. So we've been active in lots of different ways that way. Our, our priorities as an EDA. Include the West End Project, Broadband, and in the long run. The old landfill, which is the old dump south of town. If you ever walk through that area, and I'm not recommending it, but you get down to the end where the old brush dump is. Walk down there, you can smell the methane. So we're hopeful to try to do something with that, with the federal brownfield program. But we haven't been successful in landing our, our grant yet. Well, we'll see. Maybe it's just not bad enough, but maybe there are places, there probably are places that are worse. And we have a community center, which we sold twice now. We are very, this developer will do, he will, he's on track. Now, none of that will really start working on until. Oh, this winter it'll start some inside stuff and things like that, but we're looking forward to a boutique hotel operating there. So that'd be a good reuse for that, rather than trying to let it suffer as a building eventually. Hotel.
Hotel.
Yeah, boutique hotels. And he, in order for the city to sell it to him, he needed to prove up his finances. And he did, so we're confident. The first buyer did not have the financial strength to pull it off. And so then we took the building back and then listed it again in the part on this. Both whole buildings are hard to market. We're fortunate that Ely is kind of a burgeoning, you know, community and someone's willing to take the risk to do that.
Any parking for the hotel?
He's required to provide parking and it's anticipated that the two houses to the east will be purchased and demolished. That's what we anticipate, but there's no deal there yet. But it's a requirement of the, of the permit that he creates off speed parking. We're talking about using the senior citizen law and things like that. And he said, no, 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 you're not gonna clog up city streets and, you know, for commercial development that just needs to fight the bull and create their own. Other things that we've been involved in recently. We were kind of forced into a corner and we got IRRV money to. Build a half million dollar water line for the new school. It hadn't been included in the project. We don't know why, but then it wasn't, so how do you hold up a project like that? So we stepped up and played engineering and did the whole project. IRRR funded all of that. Or I think almost. You know, over time, then everybody's been talking about fiber. We, really, part of this, the Utilities Commission stepped up and said. All right, we're not gonna wait for the companies to come to a small town like this, we're gonna do it ourselves. So in fact, the Utilities Commission contracted with a company and it's now run by a company called CTC. Ran two fiber lines down the alleys in the downtown district down from there to the park. And they're operating and they're getting customers, those are high-speed fiber lines. But in doing so then, I'm, I'm thinking it's this way. I think we prompted NICO to put their money on the table and so they're running fibers through town. If we hadn't pushed them, I don't know that they would. They never had any, they talked about it before. So we said, yeah, all right. Yeah, talk, if you talk about it, we're gonna build. So we build a partial system, what will happen in the long run? CTC may choose to run that and if they make enough money on it, great. But NICO's making a big investment in Ely too, and that's the building down there, Holiday. Stationed in this block Y, planning and something, let me put it there. Not my choice. We continue to demolition light properties. The cemetery is active in using money from a group called the Corfee Trust. They left, they left a considerable amount of money for the city to use exclusively in the cemetery. And it all depends on the interest generated from the trust. And this year, I don't think there'll be anything or not much. But in general, they anticipate about thirty thousand dollars a year. To do things like build a columbarium, which they did, and we're selling these as in now. There was so much to hand, you thought we'd have to build another one, but not, not yet. But that, that's a project we've worked on. Currently under development is a Pioneer Mine Memorial. Listing all the names of the miners who died under gun. And so we're working on that, that's an IRRV grant. Fifteen thousand in donations and fifteen from the city. Continue to be involved in something called the Main Street Project. There's money out there coming through, I think, the Northland Foundation. And we will use that money to support. The Eagle Creek Development, which is the old Zupstar. And the Roundhouse, he was interested in redeveloping the Roundhouse area, current owner. We're not sure how that's gonna work, you know, the price, it's all about money, you know, the pricing. Right up your building is outfitters. Beyond that, there's a series of buildings that the trains were rounded out, you know, that kind of thing. So that's currently in private ownership, just moving to help facilitate a change of use for that. You know, there's possibly, can you imagine? And I'm not saying, I don't know who's involved in this, like a group hub or something like that. That, that's kind of the big rage now, but. We continue to operate our website, both for the city and the EEDA. If you have any interest in knowing what's going on in the cities, those are both updated regularly. And information about business development and community activity that all went through there. So we, you know, we're contracted with the community. Keeps those up to date and adds information. To continue our tour around the community, the old Minnesota Department of Revenue Building. There's probably a lot of rumor out there about that, but the recreational, what is it called? The recreational facility. A group that's been trying for years to try to build a recreational facility like a Y. In town. They're interested in that, they, their financing devices are all going to struggles right now, but. One of the ideas that may make this happen is that daycare facility might move in there with them. And that would provide some stability and we're hoping, of course, and we're actually listed. For a one point five million dollar childcare development grant, which we would use then to make that project more possible. You just finished, you finished up a big major expansion of the VA clinic. That was all paid for with VA funds. City has some involvement in that, but they built and were there and then they decided they needed more space and I don't know if. We can get a public up for that. But when on our tour, that's a beautiful facility. Veterans of the community appreciate having that available. So it's another thing that we did to try to, we, we actually put in a bid when it first started to try to capture that particular. Project and other communities were bidding for it as well. So we were fortunate to get that. We have a couple of big challenges though. And I'll maybe articulate a few of these in a little bit of detail. Biggest one we face is the budget. In the last year. We had, we are financially very well managed. We say that we're high bond rating. We need tomorrow money, we get it at good rates. That, we have to be careful about that because last year or the last two years. We spent two hundred thousand dollars buying land near the Tresona Trail. It was, it was an easier way to solve a big problem. And then we were able to, we had the developer interested in building some, some housing there. Now, problem with developers, that's under sixty units, they don't even go there. You gotta have a big project to interest people with money. So they can make more money. But we had someone on the line there and maybe that's its ultimate use that we're trying to build. The city of Ely doesn't have a lot of property, available property. And so we have to use everything we have and that might be a space for more housing in there, near there. And we, and we bought a half a million dollars worth of fire room rooms. They moved ladder truck, not new, new to us ladder truck. So that's a big chunk out of the reserve. And we just spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our share of the ambulance garage thing. So our reserves took a big hit and we need to be careful how we come into twenty twenty-three. And so at the budget meeting last night, now this is just preliminary, we'll recommend it to the council. The original levy increase was seven percent. And some of us, like me, who are budget hawks, said we can't go to the community with that. So we set a target and I was wanting to go to five. Which I still think is, you know, budget inflation and wage negotiations and. Need to replenish our reserve fund, all of these things are kind of act, you know. Feeding up to the fact that we do need a healthy levy increase. And so we recommend to the council that it be a six percent increase in levy. And we are advocating that we do not do as many of the capital projects. Some of the Eighth and Ninth and Harvey down there that I talked about. That, we, we won't do those till the following year or we'll delay. Problem is, of course, the following year, the county will then start redeveloping Harvey Street. And so the first two or three blocks, they'll do one year and the next two or three blocks, they'll do the next year. The city's responsible for all the lateral connections and sewers and things. That are a cheap bill either. Lots of competing projects for, for city capital money. Yeah, and then of course we have the ambulance problem, which is a problem for the entire area. And that's a tough net to crack, I have to tell you. It really is. From my understanding, and now don't quote me on this, they need about a million dollars a budget. And that million dollars is offset by about maybe five hundred thousand in revenue. This is, this in contemplates having a second ship. So that they could operate twenty-four seven or more extensively as they do now. That puts the burden on Ely and Morrison, Fall Lake to come up with a way to finance that. Bring in real estate taxes, but then you're, you're talking about a ten to twelve percent increase in your real estate. And your tax bill. No one wants to do that, everybody's scrambling, you try to find creative ways. Angela just came from a joint meeting where some resolution was produced.
There was a good resolution.
So look forward to that. The ambulance is a tough net though. In the long term, they need a stable revenue source. We don't know exactly what that will be, but we differ in what should happen. For example, the city would like to see it as a per parcel kind of thing. Everybody pays on their real estate taxes would pay a fee to fund the ambulance service, that would work. Morris prefers that we go to a per person. Which of course, then the city really pays most of it and even people who move into the city from Morris Township, we pay for all of that. So we find that it's unfair too, so we're gonna dicker about that for some time, but perhaps they'll need a resolution. Long-term funding for ambulances is a problem everywhere in the state, I think. So we face that as well. And like I said, we're, we're scrambling for housing, we have a plan to build, but we have to fund it. We have some lots for selling, now on the townhomes that we're supposed to build. I would hope then that those will be purchased by people who have property in the city. I, most of you are from Morris Township. What we want then is to open up city houses. And the people moving out of those houses move into townhomes and then their home becomes available for sale.
And I'd like to end that with putting a moratorium on Airbnbs. So that. You know, we can, that. We're putting a moratorium on Airbnbs. We're now, I think, at twenty-six, we're up to with the moratorium at thirty-five.
Yeah, I don't want to.
So that we can maintain, you know, a level of, of homeownership. For families. So that we can maintain, you know, a level of, of homeownership for families.
I have a particular concern about short-term rentals. I think that they're, they degrade communities. Uh, and it will increase the need for public safety and stuff like that. So I argue against. Uh, if you ask me if we should do any short-term rentals, I would say ours are, or should be zero. Well, I was in a distinct manner. People like the Airbnb experience, I've done it myself. Um, and so without being a hypocrite, you look at what happens to communities that have extensive Airbnb needs. And they're difficult to control. And so we set a limit of thirty-five and we're approaching that limit between those who have already applied and have licenses. And those who we anticipate will. But when we reach that limit, if you will come into Ely and you invest money and you wanna turn it into an Airbnb, you're out alive. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of teeth gnashing about that too. Gabri.
How many Airbnbs have occurred over the last five years, they've occurred prior to the last five years?
All of them have. And we have no, we have no, and that doesn't include the Airbnbs in the commercial corridor. We didn't feel comfortable telling people like new country outfitters, you know, they have rentals upstairs for their guests. Do we count them? So we just didn't count the ones in the, in the commercial corridors. It's thirty-five in the residential areas. Where in fact the big impact is.
And we have eleven in the commercial.
Eleven, yeah. And we have nothing to do with the uh, the county licensing of, of short-term rentals in, in Morse Township or some other towns. Involved then in the lodging tax board and I'm on that. Um, that then oversees the collection, uh, distribution of the monies that you pay when you stay here, so we're setting a half. Yeah.
When they come to town and buy one of those, I'll just say that it's fifty years of deferred maintenance and you turn it into an Airbnb. How much does that release the tax base somehow?
Quite a lot. We're gr- grateful for that investment. I, I really am. People put a lot of money into these Airbnbs, but you have to limit the, the number you have in the community. Right now, one of the effects of having Airbnbs is that there's probably nothing for rent in the city of Ely. Nothing. If there is, it pops up randomly. That's a tough nut to crack too, yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure how far I got in your presentation. Could I go back to that? Said that the city purchased fifty thousand dollars or a half a million dollars, I forget, like you said, a firefighting foam for your new.
No, not foam. We bought uh, an air, we bought a ladder truck and another, and another pumper truck. Got them used from a place in Pennsylvania.
Oh, okay, so.
We had a deal because a new ladder truck cost a million six.
Okay, the subject I was interested in really, I'm an ex-fireman, was your mention of firefighting foam. I thought that you said the city had just bought a large.
No, I don't know anything about that. I don't know how they consider what they do, but. You're a good question for the chief. Dave Marshall's an excellent respond, he's responsive to the people's questions and concerns.
Okay, that's not a bad idea. I've got one other question. Um, I'm, uh, this is the first time I've met you. I'm from Minnesota, my name's Doug Landy. I occasionally come into town. Do business, fish here, visit here, know a few of the people in the room. Meeting a couple of weeks ago in Ely, there was a gal from the town council. I think she said she'd been a part of it for a long time here.
Yes.
Couldn't answer a question I asked. She said she'd never heard anything about it. You know Patty Steger was able to hook up her uh, solar electric array to the power again?
Where is this located on the factory?
Yeah, it's on the new factory and they haven't been able to look it up. And I continue to ask your question at, at that meeting.
I'm not sure those kinds of uh, problems don't rise to the council for discussion, they generally get resolved within staff. And if she's putting up a solar array, we, we, we've supported some of those in town as well.
We do.
Yeah, the one I think of, I see regularly over on East James.
Okay, I'm also fellow who, um, the city has having problems with, wanted to do an independent solar house. If you heard of him, because I think you did this, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't bring him up, but it's Andy Hill.
Yeah, yeah.
He's down on Spalding Drive there, is that what it is there? Yeah, the issue there is that on cloudy days or when he's low on solar power, he needs to run a generator.
Oh.
And that generator then has, we've fought, we've discussed the, the impacts of running a generator in the residential area.
I got you.
That's a tough call, but we wanna encourage independence.
I got you.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment having to do with running a generator on a cloudy day? We also live off grid, we're not within the city limits. And most people who live off grid, excuse me, and use a generator, run it no more than say two hours during a day. And um, it has seemed to me that's quite comparable to the complaint of noise that's made when somebody's out mowing a lawn. On a sunny summer day and that's something we're considering because it's not the generators running all day on a cloudy day. It's only enough to give the batteries a break back up again. And uh, people off grid don't wanna run their generator anymore than possible.
Yeah. Well, I agree. I think, I think the city can also run it with all of that. Um, and so it's not an easy solution because you wanna do two things. Right, right, if I was, if I lived next to someone running a generator for two hours a day. I might, and depending on how what, what the law considers and how well it was controlled, I might not be very happy either. I don't know, I've never lived in a generator running.
Paul, would you tell me how is the bed tax distributed and who, who actually is in charge of it, who distributes it?
Yeah, so the taxes collected from lodging um, in, is the Ely, greater Ely area. In fact, we're just working with the county board to expand that area, but it includes Ely, Fall Lake, Morse, not Eagles Nest. Uh, somewhere around Babbitt, if I'm not Babbitt itself. Uh, they may eventually want to join us because of the cooperative nature of our marketing. I selected then and it's sent to currently Cook County as the collector and distributor of it. And they're not doing, the area's overwhelmed. And so we're hoping to move that collection part of it to the state of Minnesota. And particularly if the city was county starts to have a bed tax that they need to distribute. Right now then, that money comes to a lodging tax board, which each of the entities have, uh, has a seat on. And we essentially meet very briefly to, you know, state laws for clear, all of the tax money must be distributed to a qualified organization. And that qualified organization has to meet criteria. And there's only one per region and in our area, then that's the tourism tax board. And so the money goes to them. That's not an incentive amount of money. That's al- almost three hundred thousand dollars a year and the law specifies that it be used, it's be used for marketing purposes. So we have a lodging tax board, which gets their money as a pass you from the government's collector. Um, then develops a marketing fund, hires resources and people, then they report back to us on their success. If they wanna change it. We're not the experts in marketing. Really what the experts are are the people on the tours of them. They know how to protect their properties and they're gonna enjoy it.
Yeah, and we have a Tuesday group from January of this year that was recorded. And it's on the Boundary Waters Connect YouTube channel. If you wanna hear Cindy Smiker's overview of how tourism bureau funds are used.
Almost agree with that.
We have a question from this, from a Zoom audience member named Richard Watson. He's asking, will you support the Minnesota Police Officers' Standards and Training Rule Changes? To ban police officers who support, advocate or participate in any form in the activities of a white supremacist hate or extremist group or criminal gang? As demonstrated by its official statement or principles, the statements of its leaders or members for its activity.
No, no, that's an awful.
Let me. The heart of it, which was usually support the police officer's standards and training rule changes to ban police officers who support, advocate or participate in any um, hate activities, extremist group or white supremacist.
In general, if it's positive by the police skills and training, um, kind of board, we would adhere to those. All, all law enforcement would do that. And so I don't think there's a big tolerance for police officers who participate in, in hates, to speech. Or hate activities, kind of thing like that. So that alone would be enough to be disqualifying, but I'm glad to hear that it's being built into the police officer, uh, training. Thank you, Richard.
I have a question just about the Ely Airport. So there's a lot of investment in the airport and I'm just curious, what end, how do you see that being beneficial from an economic development standpoint?
From an economic development standpoint, an airport is almost essential for community growth. Now, most of the use of the Ely Airport is not by Ely residents, can tell you that. And so if it was left to a vote of the city of Ely, it wouldn't be a tough sell. But the fact is, we, we know, all know, or we have, most of us recognize. And an airport creates economic activity and we're looking to create more economic activity by, we're gonna purchase some land nearby and then allow people to build private hangars. So they'll fly their plane in and then maybe some places they've built um, apartments on top of them and stuff like that. So we look to expand that, but from an economic standpoint, the biggest advantage to having an airport like Ely's is uh, fire protection. We, we house federal planes and state planes and helicopters and we make a lot of money where there's a fire. I hate to say that because it's not a good thing to have a big fire, but. Ely's well positioned to fight a lot of the fires that, that occur because of the nature of the use of the local state campaign.
But we also, we also gain from the fuel sales.
Yeah.
Big time.
Yeah. Yeah, we also gain from the fuel sales that we sell to these governments, you know, they come in and pump a couple thousand gallons of shot, we make money out. It's a big, it's a big guy.
Richard has a, Richard has a follow-up regarding the former question. Does it change your opinion if you find opposition came from the Minnesota Sheriffs Association? The Minnesota Peace and Police Officer Association and the League of Minnesota Cities and others? They argued that the term white supremacist and extremist or hate group are unconstitutionally overboard and vague and infringe on an applicant's and licensees' right, the privacy, free speech, religion, association, due process and against self-incrimination. So it sounds like there's uh, opposition from the police officers, Minnesota Police Officers' standards and these other entities. Does that change your opinion?
Well, I, I think about it a little bit more just because League of Minnesota Cities, we're a member of that organization. And I agree probably the, I'm getting into deep water here, but. It is probably a little vague to describe white supremacy. I don't wanna encourage or incur uh, curb anybody's free speech. But in fact, I think as a police officer, you're held to higher standards. And you know, the idea that you are a representative of our community. That means that participating in hate groups and hate speech, to me, in my opinion, that's a disqualifying thing.
Other questions?
Okay, I, I don't understand what's happening at the old stocks.
They're called Eagle Creek Development. It's Jay Poedek, I've got a J and L hardware. And his wife, uh, they're partners in this and they purchased both of those grocery stores, both the old Shups and the old Northland Market. Mary tends to be developing them and I shop, you know, and I keep asking them when you're gonna make the move. But that's a big, big project to, to, to redevelop or that was a grocery store and now needs the function of a. Multi-use building kind of thing, so. No, I anticipate they're gonna move in there. Pretty quick, huh?
Spring.
Spring. I know they're already moving a few things. Fire.
Oh.
I'm going to speak on the park of Ely. Whiteside, Whiteside and Seymour are well-used and well-cared.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any idea what the aughts plan to do?
I do not read minds. Well, we're grateful for the investment that they've made in some of their buildings. It's through the theater complex. Um, you know, some of the downtown stores, those are, those are wonderful additions to Ely. I think it's difficult in this financial environment to, to uh. For them to do a lot more. Nevertheless, there are some concerns. The old Ford Garage, it's in a residential area, first in Honon Street. And if you ask me, that's blight. But Tannerott suggests that they're gonna redevelop that, but in all the, from my perspective, clock is ticking. Can't run for ten years, keep it alive. I don't know.
Paul, that's a good segue to the development questions. You, you touched on that a number of times. We, we confront in Ely the same problems every other rural, small rural community does. You mentioned developers were uninterested in smaller projects. What, what are you guys in the council doing to bring developers to town? Cause that's really the bridge we need to getting housing here. Uh, comprehensive plan that was put together a couple of years ago. But challenge to meet any of the suggested changes that are coming. It's worked hard to, the opportunities occur, but there's so much more to be done.
And we're looking to update that.
Yeah.
This is a.
Or twenty nineteen maybe, it was, it's not that long.
This is a tough, posing a tough nut to crack. Private developers of course wanna return on their money. And if they can't get it with smaller units, they don't build them. And so that's where I personally would think that the city has almost an obligation to step in with public money. Now, how you interface with a private developer with public money, you're just gonna give them the two million dollars they need to lead the project? We know that's not gonna happen. I'm business of giving out that kind of money to anything. Um, I think what we can do is continue to do what we can on the public side, like the townhome development that's been proposed. Find a way to uh, fund that. When Rosa went out looking for a multi-unit development house, uh, project. Um, they have workforce housing issues there. And they were able to do a very same, a similar thing. They have a six million dollar project, they could finance four of it in traditional matters. And they scrambled and they found ten different organizations that helped fill the gap. And in fact, the city had to step in and say, we're gonna take a general obligation bond. Don't quote me on the specifics of that proposal, but it's an illustration of like, you gotta step up if you're gonna make things happen. If housing is our biggest problem, I try to step up. I don't think you can entice a developer.
The odds aren't really residential development.
No.
It's not their strength, so.
Like you see the Santa Hospital.
Question, um, you're voting for mayor.
Yeah.
Why should legal free?
It's the beginning of the campaign here today. We're trying to get you to appreciate myriad ways in which the city, you know, does contribute and create the quality of life. That's the most important, yeah. I usually vote for you because I'm the best candidate. I have a breadth of experience at work, as I described, in economic development here in town. I've been long, what's here, and I'm active, you can tell just why I'm here today. Uh, I know that most of you are not really residents, so there's not many votes to be being here, if any. Um, but I'm here because I believe in the product and I've always been civic, like, that's kind of.
For all influencers.
Yeah.
Are there things that you think you could do as a mayor that you can't do as a company's mayor?
Yeah, there are. There are some things. One of the little pet projects that I haven't really talked about much is. I'd like to see the city have better uh, personnel evaluations of senior staff. We rarely do that and it's nice for them to get feedback. Uh, not necessarily from us, because I don't, you already know, some of these people do. And I can't judge them on the quality of their work because I don't see them. Um, like the building inspector or, you know, even the city account, I don't, I see this as part of the budget. But the people who work under the, you know, the public works director should be evaluated by public works employees as well. A more comprehensive look at city managers. I think I, as a mayor, I'd be active in providing kind of a bully public for city issues. I'm focused on city issues though. I have no political ambitions to go further. I have no political ambitions to go from, believe me, lots of areas.
But also through our charter, you have the legislative basis to cover.
Yeah, I'd be representing the city.
I have been asked or requested to ask the question. But, uh, do you have any regulations on wood burning in town here? We have, uh, there is a party to the income family who just burns, burns wood and we get the most of the particulates. Our home probably closer to his outside wood burner than his home. So we get the ma- the majority of his particulates. And he doesn't cure it with, and his chimney is only ten feet high off the ground. Is it like, is there anything we can do about that or do about that?
I'm trying to run into this kind of, what's, it's kind of a public nuisance from the path of this. And perhaps it's a solution that, uh, encourage him to have a taller stack. Spread the, you know, like all tall chimneys, they spread it off wider. I'm not sure that's good. It's still particulates, but we don't have any restrictions on people. But it's, it's an issue that maybe could be brought up.
At a council meeting?
No, I would start at a committee perhaps.
Which committee?
That one. Yeah, planning and zoning, that's probably a good choice. We're, we're not, I have a news reader right now.
Uh, a lot of people would say that the biggest problem facing all entities is climate change threats. Does the council think that seriously in terms of what mayor and the council could do to lower the city of Ely's carbon footprint? And in, in encourage building more, uh, electric vehicle plug-in units, et cetera?
Yeah. We have the charging units, uh, at the library. I think there's, uh, uh, effort afoot to make them broader. There's grant money out there to do those kinds of things. Um, but I'm not sure of that really. Uh, I wanna give a shout out to a former mayor, Ross Peters. Because during his tenure, he made an emphasis to try and identify ways in which the city could lower its carbon impact. And I think it's probably time to revisit that. I mean, everybody's interested in fuel efficiencies or economic curves. And so I think we're not, we're not grossly, we're aware of those kinds of things, but we don't have an active. The Whiteville maybe, I do plank it right back.
Got a question back here. And when you answer, I'll help you get a little closer to your mic.
Okay.
Hi Paul, thanks for coming today. Um, my question is about the dark sky movement. Um, I know that there's a group that, um, had, was interested in it and um, brought some proposal to the city council. I don't have the details about that. But currently there, um, there is an increasing interest in, uh, participating in the dark sky designation. And I wonder if you had any comments about what has happened with that in the past or current thoughts about it?
Tax my memory. Uh, there's so many people come to the council and we didn't have the schedule of it. I'm not sure there was a specific proposal. Um, but I think many communities are, and nearly two, uh, is interested in trying to sort of comply with the dark sky requirements, streetlights that shine down, not up, that kind of stuff like that. And I think newer streetlights, the county proposal. But we don't get to choose those.
But we are trying to.
Yeah.
We have.
So there will be another, another thing to consider as, as I go forward. Well, Casey and Tamara Diggle, what was that happened at the council before? This was several years ago. That they came forward. And I think it's just sort of riddled since then. Maybe, uh, bring it back up and see what we can do. And we'll probably go to the attendance commission for consideration of, of lighting, public lighting. I talked to Harold.
Paul, I wanna personally thank you for your many years of service to Ely.
Oh, thanks.
If you were LinkedIn mayor, would you still be on the, if you defeated, would you still be on the council?
Yes, if I'm defeated, I'll still be on the council.
Okay.
That won't happen.
Do we have one last question? We had a question on the Zoom. As mayor, how open will you be to questions from Ely voters and will you answer questions asked?
I will. I'm transparent. Uh, I, my phone numbers are there. People rarely call. Um, but I'm not afraid to listen to and talk to people. Listening is more important.
And so the last way to reach you is by phone?
Phone or text. I have a city email address, which is Pitacatsat City and it's on a website. I check that email every day.
One last question?
Sure. I'm, I'm here for a while if you need me. Like I said, I want to increase your appreciation for the efforts that the city goes to do to make this a good unit.
Oh, yeah. Well, I always, question that I have is, have you ever considered using the geographical, like a precinct system? In, in town here instead of the, we just know. It's a geographically, geographic precincts for councilor.
Oh, you're separating onto wards.
Right.
No, it's never been brought up. And I think the council is geographically dispersed generally, but I don't know that.
We were at one time.
A long time ago.
At one time.
I think the difficulty is that is, uh, voting precinct, then you have to staff them, uh, do all those things. It's just not that big of a place to be able to afford, here for a precinct, voting places.